Just three, just three. Go.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's candidate forum presented by the Rocky River Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. We're pleased to welcome all of you here with us tonight. I'd also like to welcome those who will be watching the recording, which will be made available on the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland YouTube channel in the coming days. My name is Alice Allen. I'm the co-chair of the Rocky River Chapter of the League. I'd like to thank the candidates in the Rocky River City Council Ward Three race for being with us this evening. Thank you to the city of Rocky River for the use of the space, and thank you to all the Rocky River Chapter volunteers for stepping this event. In keeping with our longstanding forum tradition, questions for the candidates will be submitted in written form. Everyone should have been offered a card as you entered this evening to write down your questions for our candidates. When you have a question ready, raise your hand and a runner will come and pick up your card. You can also raise your hand if you need another question card. We have two League members at the question sorting table who will be reviewing questions to avoid duplication, to provide a diversity of questions, and to ensure clarity and appropriateness. As I stated earlier, we are recording the program for future viewing on YouTube, and I want to let you all know that personal recording during the program is forbidden by League policies. You are invited to view and share the forum in its entirety on YouTube, but we also have a prohibition on sharing segments of the forum on social media. Finally, we ask the cooperation of the audience in avoiding expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during today's program. Please remember, the purpose of this evening is to hear from the candidates, so that each resident might make their own best informed decision regarding their vote, and any vocal interruption takes time away from the candidates. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Nadia Zaim, our moderator this evening. Ms. Zaim is the co-chair of the Westlake North Home Set Chapter and a Greater Cleveland Board Member since 2019. Ms. Zaim is a practicing attorney with a focus on family law, immigration law, and civil litigation. She is proud to be a member of the League because of its nonpartisan dedication to educating and empowering voters, including through candidate forums like this. Let's welcome Nadia Zaim.
Thank you, Alice. Good evening. As Alice said, my name is Nadia Zaim. I will be your moderator tonight for this forum. The League is a nonpartisan organization, which means we do not support or endorse particular candidates or political parties. We do, however, offer voter education, like this forum. Before we begin tonight's forum, let me explain our format. We have two candidates for one seat on Rocky River City Council for Ward Three, Jean Gallagher and Michael O'Donnell. We will begin with two-minute opening statements by the candidates. The candidates do numbers prior to the forum, and Ms. Gallagher will be going first. We will then ask questions for each candidate to answer. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. We will rotate which candidate answers each question first. If you would like to submit a question to our candidates, please use one of the index cards provided, and one of our League map volunteers will pick it up and hand it to our question screeners. We have also had some questions that we got from our community members, we emailed them in advance of tonight's forum, and have also generated some of our own to get us started. There are timers here tonight as well to keep track of the time and let the candidates know when they have thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and when to stop. At the end of the question period, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement in reverse order, beginning with the candidate who gave the last opening statement. And I will turn it over to Ms. Gallagher for her two-minute opening statement.
Thank you very much, Nadia. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me this evening. I also want to shout out to the school board's candidates and members for their service. Our school's excellent number-five rating in the state and top ranking in the nation only proves their hard work pays off. When I stood before you four years ago, I listed a few goals I wished to work on if I got elected. My first goal was to make sure I communicated with my ward residents. I have received hundreds of emails from residents thanking me for my prompt replies and care for their concerns. I respond within twenty-four hours to texts, phone calls, and emails. I have met with resident groups from the Westlake, South Bend Circle, Lakeview Court, Valley View, East Shoreland, Inglewood, Telver, and Linda Street, as well as some businesses in my ward, to address issues affecting them. I am approachable, accessible, and accountable to every resident, whether you vote for me or live in my ward. Currently, I chair the Buildings, Equipment, and Technology Committee. Speaking of technology, another goal was online sewer pain. And yes, we're almost there. Software training has begun. I previously served as the Chair of Planning, Zoning, and Development Committee, attending monthly meetings with the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning and Appeals. I legislated good changes to our development code. Very informative information there at those meetings. And the agendas and minutes are now online on our beautiful new website. Another goal was the Worcester Shoreland Pocket Park Project. And that is headed out to this month. We've joined the Heritage Home Loan Program, which began in January of this year. The Lake Clifton Connector, which has received so much support. We opened Brad Street Landing. What a beautiful pier. It's our forty-first year as a Tree City USA. The senior center addition and new fire station will be beautiful accomplishments to our campus, along with the amazing Safety Town in Els Enchanted Forest for the kids.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. My name is Michael O'Donnell, and I'm a candidate for Rocky River City Council Ward Three. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for arranging this event tonight. We know how much work goes into planning something like this, and we appreciate all your efforts in sponsoring this event. As I said, my name is Michael O'Donnell, and by way of background, for those of you who don't know, I'm a lifetime Rocky River resident, probably going on almost probably forty-five years, I think. I grew up here in Rocky River. I attended Goldwood School, Kensington School, the middle school, and graduated from the high school. After college and law school, I moved back to Rocky River. My wife and I bought our first home here, and it's the home we still live in today that we're raising our three children in. And it's been really wonderful to raise the kids and send them to the same school district that I went to. Some of the same teachers are still around, and I have a son who plays for the football team. And one of the football coaches that I had is now coaching Kevin for the varsity program at the high school, so that's been fun to watch that. But this is an amazing, wonderful community, and my wife and I just could not imagine raising our family anywhere else. So that's a little bit about my personal background. In terms of my professional background, I'm a practicing attorney. I practice sophisticated commercial litigation group. I handle civil cases and go into the courtroom. There are a whole lot of lawyers that are still going into the courtroom, but there are a few of us, and I'm one of them. I practice in both the state and federal courts, and I've been an attorney for, I was doing the math before I got here, going on over twenty years now. I guess maybe the last thing I'll tell you is that I have been, I served on city council for ten years prior to Jean taking over the ward, and since I've been off city council, I've still been very involved in the community with a number of economic development projects, and maybe we'll talk more about those later, but thank you all for having me.
Thank you. So now getting into the questions, we'll start with you, Mr. O'Donnell, for the first one. Why are you running for city council, and what unique experiences do you bring to that qualifying for this role?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Well, I think it goes to what I just spoke about is, you know, my wife and I, we love this community. I was raised here, and I'd like to give back to the community. We're raising our children here, and we want them to grow up in a city that everybody can be proud of. And I think my ten years' experience on city council, my twenty-plus years' experience as a lawyer, and in the last couple of years, my experience working with the city and the various land use committees on getting some development projects done, sort of uniquely qualify me for the position. And I would tell you, so it's for all of those reasons that I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, same question. Why are you running for city council, and what unique experiences do you bring that qualify you for this role?
Thank you. I first ran for city council for that very reason, so I can communicate to, I didn't feel like I received a lot of communication, so I kind of wanted to reach out to my residents and be a voice for them. I wanted to listen, I wanted to hear, I wanted to solve problems. I'm a problem solver. I like to work hard. So public service is something that wasn't on my bingo card, but I've learned to love it. And my professional job, I'm an HR and fiscal officer at the Eighth District Court of Appeals. I've seen Michael there many times, and his father was one of the judges down there, so I'm very familiar with him. And so, yeah, I love serving.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Ms. Gallagher, first. What qualities do you believe are most important for a council member, and how do you demonstrate them?
Well, like I said, communication is my number one, and I answer all emails and phone calls and texts, and if I don't know the answer, I find the answer. And we have a great administration here. I mean, the directors do great service for our residents, and they answer me right away. They don't work nine-to-five. They are available anytime I need them, and I think that the residents should know that as well. We have the Safety Service Director that works all the time. It's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Same question for you, Mr. O'Donnell. What qualities do you believe are most important for a council member, and how do you demonstrate them?
Yeah, you know, so I would say I'd probably lean on my experience as an attorney, listening mostly to the residents' problems, and then trying to figure out a solution to those problems. I also think we need some people to think out of the box, and I know that if I'm elected to council, you know, one of the things I did, you know, I think in 2018, we established a rainy day fund here for the city in Rocky River, and in 2018, we didn't need it, and in 2019, we didn't need it. But in March of 2020, COVID struck, and frankly, it started raining, and the city relied heavily on that fund, on that rainy day fund. And so, one of the things, I think we need some forward thinking, and I think it's time to replenish that rainy day fund, and that's one of the things that I would focus on if I'm elected.
Thank you. The next question will begin with you, Mr. O'Donnell. What are the biggest challenges and opportunities facing the city of Rocky River?
Yeah, I think I spoke about this briefly in my opening statement, but I, my mind initially goes to economic development, and what you hear, I think, far too often in Rocky River is, well, we don't really have any room for economic development. We're all built out here in Rocky River. We're not like Avon or some of these other cities that have land that can be developed. And I think that's sort of a dangerous way to think. I think you see a lot of redevelopment going on in the city. I think there's more coming, and so, in particular, I think there's going to be some development in Ward Three, down by Depot Street and some areas down there, and I think I have some, you know, very good experience that we could put to use with the projects that happened on Lake Road, the two office buildings that went up on Lake Road. I was involved in those on the private side, working with the city and those land use commissions and boards, getting those projects approved, and I think by any measure, they're successful. Anybody that drives by those buildings, they're beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, same question for you. What are the opportunities and challenges facing the city of Rocky River?
Well, a lot of the challenges I see facing the city of Rocky River is speeding, because that's mostly the phone calls I get, safety, streets, sewers, things like that that need to be repaired. We have a couple, you know, ordinances on the docket regarding homelessness in Rocky River, and that's going to only rise with the sad economic times we're in today, so... And then, of course, there's e-bikes that I'm anxious to get some legislation on the books for those, safety, so safety issues and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And the next question for you, Ms. Gallagher, kind of dovetails off of that, in both what you and Mr. O'Donnell said. How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs, and environmental concerns in planning for the city's future?
Councils should work together to solve those problems, and Rocky River has a great city council. We are a team. We talk to each other, we work things out, we, you know, we have a law director that we go to, we have a Safety Service Director we go to. We're going to the judges for this information on homelessness and how we can solve those problems. We work together very well, and they did prior, I believe, to my being elected as well.
Thank you.
We don't play party politics, so.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, the same question. How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs, and environmental concerns?
In general, I would agree with Ms. Gallagher. The council and the administration get along very well, but the key is to listen to what those needs of the community are, and that's, you know, that's the needs of the residents, that's the needs of the business community, that's the needs of, you know, the county and the environmental folks. So I think it is about teamwork and listening to what the needs of the community are, and then fashioning solutions to fit those needs. I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all. I think everybody's got to do their part, and every project is going to look a little different. Thank you.
Thank you. And beginning with Mr. O'Donnell, we have a question here about how the city is going to fund some new buildings in Rocky River, including a new firehouse, senior center, and a bike path on Lake Road. So how would that be funded? How do you propose that be funded?
What's that?
How do you propose that would be funded?
I haven't seen the proposals on all of those. I was on city council when we built the fire department, or, I'm sorry, we built the police department. And so, I'm making some assumptions here. I'm assuming that the fire department will be funded the same way, and the way that we did the police department was to pay for some of it upfront, but then we used some bond financing to pay for the balance of it. And from everything that I'm aware of, that seemed to be like a very financially conservative, successful strategy that worked very well. I have to believe that they're going to mimic that when we go forward to do the firehouse. I've got to believe that's the same path forward. I have not seen plans for how to pay for the senior center, and I have not seen plans for how to pay Lake Road for a bike. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, same question.
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell is correct. It is going to be paid through bonds. Our city is so fabulous getting grants, too. So a lot of the financial piece is our Safety Service Director, our fire chief, our police chief, they apply for grants, and they get a lot of grants. Lake Road is $570,000, I believe, max, for the Lake Clifton Connector, and we're tapped out on that. If they don't come through with that, then we're not buying into it, so.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, this question will start with you. How well is our community meeting the needs of its seniors, and what more needs to be done for them?
I think we do a lot for our seniors. We have a great senior center. The first term I was on, I presented their budget twice. Deb Huff is a fabulous senior center director, and we are well-known for our senior services here in Rocky River. The transportation, she applies for grants all the time, the programming, the things that are available for all of us old people, me. Yeah, Rocky River is fabulous for seniors.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, how would you propose on helping seniors, and what is the city doing for them right now?
Yeah, there's no question the city does a lot for the seniors. I mean, I think, you know, we always have to look in the mirror and see what we can do better, but our senior center, as Jean mentioned, Deb Huff does an incredible job. That senior center is nationally accredited, so there's only, I don't remember the percentage, maybe five percent or ten percent of senior centers across the country that are nationally accredited. And I know Deb worked very hard. I played a very small role when I was on council. We were very supportive of her getting that accreditation, so she's got that. The programming that's offered there, you know, the senior transportation that we offer, I do think we do a lot for the seniors, but I'd always be inclined to see what improvements we can make, but I do think we do a good job in that area.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, beginning with you. What is the number-one infrastructure issue that's facing our city right now, and what would you propose to work towards?
Well, I don't see the mayor here, but if she were here, I'm sure she would be saying sewer, sewer, sewers. We've all heard that for a number of times. I don't think, you know, we would be letting up on that, so I think, and, you know, during my time on council through today, I give the mayor a lot of credit for that, because it's very hard to dedicate those dollars to redoing those sewers from the public's perspective. You don't get any fancy, you know, there's no fancy building that's built, there's nothing that happens, but what happens is people's basements stop flooding. And so, that is an extremely important infrastructure commitment that we've made, but we need to stay with. And, you know, the other thing that we do on city council, it's not as political as people think, as Jean said earlier, is we're paving streets and picking up garbage, and those are the things we need to continue to do and do well. So those are some of the capital improvements I think we should stick with. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, what do you think is the number-one infrastructure issue facing the city?
Well, sewer, sewer, sewer. She tells it to us all the time. And, but our Safety Service Director, Rich Snyder, he gets grants. Cleveland Water is always on top of things. The Illuminating Company is on top of things. There's been a lot of flooding in my area on Beacons Field and a couple houses on Stratford where I live, so I, you know, got in touch with Rich, and we met with the homeowners, and he's getting things done. He's our guy. If he was here, I'd say. Dr. Rich.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gallagher, we'll start with you on the next question, kind of related to that. If you were to get, if the city were to get a million-dollar grant, what would be, other than the sewers, I know we've discussed that already, what else would you use that money for in the city?
For the city, I would build low-income housing for residents that are finding themselves in terrible times and can't find a place to live or an affordable place to live. That's what I would do.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, what would you do with a million-dollar grant for the city?
That's a good question. I think what I would do is use it to bolster, I think, the building department. I think there's, the building department is short-staffed, and I think if you drive around the city, everybody thinks that Rocky River is in great shape, but some of the homes aren't as in good shape as they need to be, and I think we need to do more to keep people maintaining homes and keeping up their properties and doing things maybe to assist them. Maybe we could use the million dollars, we could use it as grant money to assist people to clean up their properties, to make sure that the property values stay high and that the community stays, you know, the condition that it is, that's a community that we can all be proud of.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with you, Mr. O'Donnell, for the next one. If elected, how will you communicate with your constituents, and how often?
Yeah, so having served, I can tell you, as Jean mentioned, you do get calls. My recollection, I was getting multiple calls a week, so you communicate with people the way you communicate with anybody. It's emails, it's phone calls, it's text message, it's driving to their house to meeting them. So it just depends on what the issue is and to the extent the issue's an emergency or how quickly it needs to be responded to. But, you know, each issue is a little bit different, and each one needs to be responded to appropriately, so whatever that means for the issue that's being raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher?
I love, I love meeting residents. It makes me so happy, and I love to be able to help them. I love encouraging them to come to meetings, because if they don't come to meetings, how do we know how they're feeling? If they don't email or call, I don't want, you know, I mean, some people want to fight with me, I don't want to fight, I just want to help. So I've had that, you know, a couple incidents where, you know, they wanted to get in an argument with me, and I'm like, come to meetings, please. We want to hear your voice. We want to know what you're thinking. We want to know what your problems are, and we want to help. We do.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Ms. Gallagher, is kind of a two-part question. How would you work collaboratively with other council members, the mayor, city staff? And along with that, as you know, we probably, we live in a polarized world right now, how would you work with others that may have a different viewpoint or different perspective than you?
We just had a lunchtime seminar today with a doctor from Case Western Reserve University, Dr. Fletcher, and she spoke of this very thing today. Polarization, it has no room in my heart. I, you know, I love a lot of people in my life that have opposite views as I do, and I, you know, I don't have an agenda. I just am who I am, and I work with everybody and want to see everybody thrive and be successful and be happy, and, yeah, that's just me.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, the same question for you. How would you work with other members of city council, the mayor, city staff, and with others who may have a different perspective or viewpoint?
Yeah, thank you. You know, city council is not polarized. There's Republicans and Democrats. The mayor happens to be a Republican. Everybody works together. There's no political divide there. Working collaboratively with colleagues on council and with the mayor is not an issue in Rocky River. It is an issue in other communities, by the way, and all you have to do is go on Cleveland.com or pick up a newspaper to read about those. But that really is not an issue, and that's not to say that they all agree all the time. They don't, but everybody can get along and agree to disagree or disagree without being disagreeable, and that's just not an issue. With respect to, you know, how do you work with people with different viewpoints, I think you've got to invite them in. You've got to hear them out, listen to what they have to say, have an open discourse, an open discussion, and, you know, I'll tell you, I don't know if this question's related to what we're seeing that's happening in the media recently, but there's absolutely no place for violence or anything like that here or anywhere, so I would invite them in and talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question's a little bit technical, but Mr. O'Donnell, we'll start with you. If you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
That's a good question. I'm trying to think. I think the biggest issue that I've seen with the zoning code recently relates to businesses, and I think that our zoning code is a little behind the times, and I think there's some changes coming to it, but the number of parking spots that we require to bring a new business in, there's a formula for, based on the square footage of the business, how many parking spots you need, and we require, I think, and I think most people believe, too many parking spots, and what that does is that inhibits that economic development, that economic growth, so businesses can't come in here because they can't have enough parking for the business they want to start. So I think maybe the first thing would be to make sure the code is in line with current standards, a walkable city, a likable city. You might not need as many parking spots today as you did in the past. That's probably what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, if you could change one thing in the zoning code, what would it be and why?
Okay, so I was very involved with the zoning, changing the housing code when a developer wanted to build a structure that was higher than the Westlake condominiums, which is the highest building in our city. So that was pretty intense. I wanted to make sure all my residents knew about this, because that's in my ward, and I wanted them to be aware of that. So we changed, OB Three is no longer in our code. Also, he is so correct in the parking. The parking is out of control. And the fact that the Board of Zoning and Appeals, they don't treat everyone equally is what I found on my two years on the meeting. So some people got something, a variance, and other people couldn't get the same thing, so I didn't like that.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, starting with you. This is, again, a little bit technical. This is again a little bit technical. If there were a proposal to build a new road or bridge or other kind of infrastructure, how would you evaluate whether or not it would work implementing in the city?
Well, it would depend on where it was, what it was, and how it would be financed. I mean, we're looking at a new Millard Road Bridge that keeps getting higher and higher and higher in expenses. So, nothing's been done on that. We've also talked about the Marion ramp being removed. So, what we need is your input, residents' input, and to be engaged, come to public meetings, speak about it, and let us know how you feel.
Great. Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, if there are proposals for a new road or bridge or other infrastructure, how would you evaluate whether it's worth implementing?
Yeah, thank you. I think, well, Jean's right, there is a proposal. It's not hypothetical. There is one. I guess I'd be a little careful. I don't know that that's strictly a Rocky River City Council issue, if we're going to put a bridge in or build a new road. I think if we were going to do something like that, we'd really want to put a group of stakeholders together that would include the county, ODOT, State of Ohio, all those folks. I mean, Rocky River City Council's not really in the business of building bridges. That's not really what we would be doing. So, I would want to bring in the experts, for example, those at ODOT and other places that know how to do that, and consult with them. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, starting with you, Mr. O'Donnell, with this question. Looking back on your, both of your professional careers, what is something you would do differently? Example of something.
Oh, you first?
I don't know. Is it me or someone? Go ahead, Jean, go ahead. Oh, jeez, I don't know. There's probably, there's probably too many lessons, probably too many lessons there. You know, I missed some of the kids' games throughout some of the years. And if I would go back, I probably wish I wouldn't have missed as many of those games. I guess that's the first thing that comes to mind.
Ms. Gallagher, looking back on your professional career, what is there that you would do differently?
I probably would be an actress in Hollywood today because I moved to California in my twenties, and I gave up, so I came back. So, yeah, that's something I'll take to the grave, but I wish I would have stuck around and worked harder.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I think this will be our final question. So, starting with you, Ms. Gallagher. What is the one guiding principle that you will take with you on if you were elected to city council?
My guiding principle is to listen and to speak up and to be compassionate towards everyone.
Mr. O'Donnell, the same question for you. What is the one guiding principle you would take with you if you were elected to city council?
Yeah, I think it's the golden rule of right. Treat people as you want to be treated, right? Treat them with respect and listen to them and make sure they feel heard and that their voice is heard. So, I think if you take that principle as, you know, guidance for how you're going to handle yourself on city council, I think the residents will respond to that.
Thank you. It's now time for the candidates to give their closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes, and we will follow in reverse order the number of selections, beginning with Mr. O'Donnell.
In closing, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I'm very excited about the opportunity to rejoin Rocky River City Council if I would be so elected. As I mentioned a little bit before, I think that my background uniquely qualifies me for the position because I've served as the councilperson in Ward Three for ten years, been practicing law for over twenty years. And I worked very closely with the city on a number of, I think, what are the largest development projects in Ward Three in probably the last twenty years, namely those two new buildings down on Lake Road. So, with that background, you know, I believe that I am qualified and would like to be the next councilperson in Ward Three. I'm running because I want to give back to the community, and I want to keep Rocky River a safe place where people want to raise their families and continue to have it be the envy of the county and the state. So, that's why I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher?
Well, in closing, I also wanted to finish my first introduction about the kids because so much is about the children. They're our future. So, speaking of kids, another goal of mine was safer sidewalks, crosswalks, safety and safer streets. So, we're putting up four rectangular flashing beacons on Wager, so I'm proud of that. I really love serving my residents Ward Three. I love speaking for them. I love engaging them, getting them more involved in city council and the city. And, but we don't do it alone. There's six other council people. There's a mayor. There's an administration behind her. We have Sue Pease, who is outstanding clerk of council. So, it's not about me. It's about all of us and what we do together to help all of you. I also want to thank my husband, who split up with this, and my two daughters. They are the joy and they are my biggest accomplishment. And if I don't get reelected, I have failed. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you again to both of our candidates for participating in tonight's forum. And now that it's over, we can all give them a round of applause. Candidate forums like these cannot happen without the candidates agreeing to participate, and we're very grateful for that. I also want to thank our audience for their close attention and thoughtful questions. For more information on other races that will be on your ballot in November, please visit vote411.org. That is our nonpartisan voter guide. It is a one-stop shop for election-related information, including local and statewide issues, candidates, polling locations, election dates and hours, early voting options, and ID requirements. And if you are not already a League member and you found this event interesting and worthwhile, please consider joining the League. We're easily found online. Candidates, if you're able, will even say to speak with the community members who may have additional questions for you before the next forum starts. Thank you. I will turn it back over to Alice for her final remarks.
Thank you so much. So, again, we will be posting this video to our YouTube channel in the coming days.